So I will officially call to order this City of Kalamazoo Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty five. First order of business, roll call, Clerk Borley.
Commissioner Cooney.
Present.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Borley. Next, Communications Manager Ritzma.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is public comments, but, excuse me, just because this is a rather special and unique and once every decade or more kind of a situation, I want to set the stage here a little bit for us to just remind us all together here what we're doing. So it is this day that we have selected for the Commission to make their choices related to a new city manager. Our current city manager, the good Jim Ritzma, is going to be retiring, and so there's been an extended process to reach out, look for candidates from around the country, evaluate those candidates, have a review process for those candidates, and now we're in a situation, there are three candidates left. What's happening right now at our Committee of the Whole Meeting? This is not a meeting where we're going to be voting. No one's voting here at five o'clock. That's going to happen in our seven o'clock business meeting. I hope no one's disappointed about that. This is just an opportunity for additional community feedback and, I guess, questions from Commissioners if there are other information seem to be missing, or some comments on some of the things we've gotten. But this will not be a time when we will be deliberating and discussing candidates and our rankings of candidates and that sort of thing. That is something we're going to do at the seven o'clock meeting. And just to give everybody a heads up, we're not there yet, but if you have looked ahead at your agenda for the business meeting at seven o'clock, you may have noted that the item related to the city manager search is the last item, in essence, on a long, long agenda. So I'm going to be asking the Commission, and if they are supportive of this idea, and I'm sure the Commissioners will be, to once again do what we did earlier related to this process, to move that agenda item up to directly after public comments and before public hearings. So we'll be moving this process to the beginning of the business meeting rather than to the very end of the business meeting. So I hope that helps as far as planning your evening and not feeling like you may have to stay around for a long, long time. So that is proposed what's going to happen in our seven o'clock meeting. And for the business meeting here, more of information, general, you know, general questions, but to specific discussion of candidates, our feelings about the candidates, our personal rankings for those candidates will occur at the seven o'clock meeting. Additionally, this is, you know, ultimately to be determined here by the Commission, but we have a ballot that our Clerk has prepared, not unlike a ballot we've used before, and we selected individuals that we were going to interview, which will have ranking option on that ballot. If we go decide to go that route and do that, you know, we have not decided that yet, but that ballot is available, and Clerk Borley will have that for us. Last thing I'm going to say is this, is that people who regularly attend these meetings will remember that generally speaking, our practice is at the committee of the whole meeting to have a two-minute public comment time period, and our regular business meeting, a four-minute comment time period. However, recognizing the importance of this situation, I'm going to suggest that we do a compromise, and we'll do a three-minute time period at this Committee of the Whole Meeting, and of course, our standard four-minute time period again at our business meeting. So I guess a bonus extra minute here for the Committee of the Whole, anyone who'd like to take advantage of it. I just want to say that if you have prepared in advance, knowing that you just had two minutes, there's no reason you have to use that extra minute if you don't want to, but it's there for you to use. At this point, then, that's where we are in our agenda. We're at the time for public comments, so if you'd like to make a public comment, please come forward, state your name, whether you live in the city, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wendy Fields, and thank you so much for additional minute, but I won't be needing it. I timed myself. My name is Wendy Fields, and as I stand before you as the President of the Kalamazoo Branch of the NAACP, while I am unable to attend the seven P M. regular business meeting, I wanted to ensure my thoughts are conveyed to the Commission and the community at this meeting. It is important to me that my perspective is included in the ongoing discussions and decisions affecting our city. I have already provided my feedback regarding the city manager candidates through your survey and an email I sent to all of you. However, I want to briefly recap my thoughts here. First, I recognize that Laura Lamb is smart, knowledgeable, articulate, and genuinely cares about Kalamazoo. However, during the meet and greet, as well as the interviews, a recurring concern was raised. That is, there's a lack of transparency, trust, and communication with the community, staff, and the Commission. My concern is that if Laura Lamb is selected as city manager, these issues may persist and things will remain unchanged. My preferred candidate is Malcolm Hankins. I believe Kalamazoo would benefit from a fresh, innovative perspective. Mr. Hankins appears to have the ability to help address existing gaps and would be willing not only to listen, but to truly hear what the voices of the community, staff, and the Commission and be willing to implement change. Both candidates have strengths and weaknesses and areas for growth. Regardless of the outcome, the Metropolitan Kalamazoo NAACP remains committed to working with this Commission and the City Manager's Office. Our shared goal is to help Kalamazoo become a more anti-racist, equitable, and inclusive city for everyone. And I also want to thank the City Election Committee for my very nice birthday card. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name's Edward Nickerson. Several years ago, I was in this room, and Don Cooney was standing right by me, and he put his hands on me, and when he done so, he shoved the palm of it into my back. I've been in pain every soaps because of that. Now, he verbally threatened me. Don Cooney, die! Mr. Anderson, one night it was real dark and raining heavily. I thought I was going to hit a person in the middle of the road, so I swerved and wrecked my car on the curb. The next day I found out you installed some of these sticks. What do you have to say about that? Are you trying to kill someone? Today they illegally searched my apartment. For those who say stuff that they want to do something about, the stuff that goes on and people being homeless, they'll start at my apartment building because they're getting really, really mad. It's Northwind Apartments.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Commissioners. My name is Wendy Flora, and I am a resident of the City of Kalamazoo, and I'm also on the Board of Isaac. I'm here today to show my support for Mr. Malcolm Hankins as city manager for the City of Kalamazoo. I spoke with all candidates at the open house and watched all of the interviews. While all candidates have good credentials, I believe that Mr. Hankins is the best fit. Mr. Hankins appeared very approachable and would be receptive to listening to members of our community. His experience in housing, both in government positions, as well as his personal endeavors, lend a very unique background that would help in the Kalamazoo housing crisis. His positions in other demographically similar communities give him a leg up in dealing with our community with an equity lens. It's time for a change in Kalamazoo government, and I believe that Malcolm Hankins is the right person to move us forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Maggie Adams, and I do reside in the city, and I'm also a member of Isaac. I'm not going to use the extra minute either. Kalamazoo, we know, operates as a council manager form of government, so choosing the city manager is not just about our city operations or our finances. It's about whether or not where your commitment stands in advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion in those day-to-day operations beyond just having a department and also in our policies. And perhaps maybe in bigger for us in Kalamazoo City, the public trust. This might be the most defining decision you make as a City and Commission. As I indicated in my email to each of you when I went more in depth, I think all three candidates have what I call competency for being a city manager. In my opinion, those are just hard skills, and anything they don't have, those are teachable. You can learn those things. In my opinion, what we're moving more this election to is what we call soft skills. Those are not as teachable. It's who is the individual that we're looking for as a leader? It was integrity and ethical standards to build trustworthy connections within our city teams, the council, within us in the community, and public trust. And to me, only one candidate that stood out to me to meet the criteria from our stakeholder meetings and answered some of your own words in this process was Malcolm Hankins. To you, Commissioner Pradel, I believe he's a leader that you talked about that has that technical expertise, but also the ability to motivate and invigorate and help the community believe that we can, as you say, punch above our weight. To you, Mayor Anderson, to your words, I believe he's the person that will use the doing of the work to bring us together. To you, Commissioner Cooney, to your words, you said you wanted somebody that was be out in the neighborhoods, who neighborhoods could trust from the beginning, and I believe he's our candidate. To you, Commissioner Decker, you were looking for somebody who'd be out in the community and listening, and he said that many times that he goes out in the community, and he finds those voices that you may not always hear from. In all actuality, selecting Malcolm Hankins as our next city manager with the support of Laura Lamb in her current position, it's perfect. It's ideal. It's a great opportunity to bring in someone with a fresh perspective, be willing to take a risk and disrupt the current city culture, and start to build trustworthy connections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name's Andrew Lehman. I'm a resident of Oxtamo. I had a business in Kalamazoo for twenty-seven years. I lived in Kalamazoo for thirty years. All my volunteer work is in Kalamazoo. First of all, I want to thank you for all the work you're putting into this endeavor, exceedingly important. You're putting a lot of extra time, seven o'clock on Friday morning, my goodness. But the investment of your time is worth it. This is an important juncture in the city, so thank you for the efforts that are going forward. In my opinion, one significant way to look at this choice you folks will be making is are we going to take the easy status quo stance and hire someone who has a long history here with some ups and downs in our city? Or are we going to have the courage and vision to take on seriously the challenge before us and launch out in a new direction? The status quo candidate is Ms. Lamb. The new direction option is best represented by Mr. Hankins. He has a strong professional background and would bring a new perspective that is needed as Kalamazoo's future is at a crossroads. Maybe we can get some inspiration from our sports teams. The Lions aren't the same old Lions. The Tigers aren't losing a hundred games. They have a new trajectory. The cultures have clearly changed for the better. And closer to home, the Broncos are the national champions. They were not satisfied by winning most of their games and having a good season. They set the bar higher and achieved their highest goal. My hope is that your goal are also very high, and your bar is high, and you will come to a speedy consensus to offer the city manager position to Mr. Hankins. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Does somebody have their phone on here? There we go.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name is Caleb, and I work in the city for Isaac and the Campaign for Criminal Justice Transparency. I followed this process closely, and I have attended the search firm interviews, the candidate meet and greets, the candidate interviews, along with attending multiple community listening sessions to hear what we are looking for in a new city manager. I am here to respectfully urge you to select Malcolm Hankins as our next city manager. But first, I want to ground my comments in the very priorities you have already established for this crucial role. Commissioner Pradel, you have emphasized the need for a manager with a focus on equity, housing, and community engagement. Vice Mayor Hess, you said they need to have an awareness and a way of being that emphasizes and keeps D E I. at the forefront. And Commissioner Hoffman, you highlighted the importance of lifting up diversity, equity, and inclusion, and also having a lens and experience with executing anti-racism into the work. These are the standards you set, and they should be the standards that guide this decision. I will speak more at seven P M. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening to our mayor, our vice mayor, Commissioners, and city staff. My name is Charle Davis. I have already emailed you all my selection, Mr. Malcolm Hankins, and I will speak more at seven P M. at that meeting. Before I read Coach Shilt's email to you that he emailed to you all, I would like to ask when the feedback from the feedback forum is shared later in this meeting, that there also be some clarity around the A I.-generated summary of form responses. That means, and my question is, what bias potential is there, the lack of critical understanding and summaries that are simple, and how that might impact any findings? Next, I want to read Coach Shilt's email to you who was unable to attend tonight. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Commission Members, after meeting and greeting, and then listening to the interviews of our four city manager candidates, may I offer my thoughts below? I was impressed with the four finalists. I thought the questions asked and responded to during the interviews were thoughtful and penetrating. Congratulations to each of you for your part in this process. I have submitted my online evaluation to each of the three remaining candidates, but wanted to share my conclusions with each of you by email as well. I believe that Malcolm Hankins is the best person for the job. He came across to me as talented, professional, thoughtful, and empathetic. I believe he has the qualifications to move us forward as a community in new ways. I liked the following aspects of his presentation. He has experience leading others effectively. He is willing to go into the trenches to hear the voices of our underserved populations, many of whom have given up on government's ability to make their situation better. He appears to have a good grasp of balancing good trouble with effective compromise. I liked what I perceived as boldness. He won't back down from a problem. I believe he has the desire to learn and to grow in this position. He doesn't appear to me to be a person who has all of the answers. He seemed to have a healthy humility in his demeanor. So I'm going to go ahead and stop here, and Chair Sister Kathy's going to continue on with Coach's email.
Thank you.
Good evening. I also think he is willing to stand up and be counted on to advance equity and inclusion. He is not afraid of the uncomfortable. I personally would be comfortable sitting down with him to explain the difficulty or problem. I think he has a gift for deep listening to all people. I sense that he could be effective at bringing people on both sides of an issue to a consensus so that something positive could happen. I trust him to genuinely seek the trust of the community. I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Pradel's comments that we are at a critical point in our history as a city. We need bold, progressive leadership now more than ever. I humbly submit my input on how to move forward in a brave new way for the City of Kalamazoo. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Amy Klein. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Tonight you are being asked to select from three finalists to determine who will replace our outgoing city manager, Jim Ritzma. This crucial task has been put before you as our elected representatives. I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts on this matter. I am speaking tonight as a longtime resident of Kalamazoo. I have raised my children in this beautiful, diverse, and strong city. While the three final candidates are all amply qualified, I would like to take this opportunity to voice my support for our very own Laura Lamb. I first met Laura at a birthday party that our kiddos were at in two thousand and fourteen. As a typical conversation often goes when first meeting other parents, I remember asking her about her job and what she did. And while I cannot quote anything that she specifically said all those years ago, I remember her passion that she shared about her job with the community, with community development and the projects that she was involved with. Tonight I also speak as a city employee, because three years after first meeting Laura and getting to know her as a parent, I accepted a position with the city clerk's office, and I began to get to know her as a coworker and a colleague. In my positions with the city, both previous and current, I've had the opportunities to support all levels of city staff: public services, management services, community planning and economic development, parks and rec, public safety, and the city manager's office. I have had a unique opportunity to see things from a backdoor perspective. I have watched as Laura has grown in her career, moving from one success to the next, truly moving up the ladder. And I still see the same passion that she shared years ago at that birthday party. At work, I know Laura to be a beacon of wisdom and compassion with a willingness to roll up her sleeves to get things done. Even in her current role, I have felt at ease bringing up issues that I felt needed to be addressed, and she not only took time to listen to my thoughts and concerns, she took action. Laura brings with her a love for Kalamazoo, this town that we call home. She has chosen to raise her children here and to serve her community. Her roots in Kalamazoo run deep and strong. She knows the issues that our city deals with. She understands what solutions have been tried before and what has worked and what has not. She holds a profound wealth of knowledge that as our next city manager will allow her to hit the ground running. I believe that Laura Lamb is ready and able and willing to bring her own fresh perspective that will be bolstered by her long history in our town. I hope that you, as our City Commission, will recognize the value of hiring from within and will choose the candidate who has consistently proven her commitment to our beautiful city of Kalamazoo. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jess Thompson. I live in the Vine neighborhood. I am running for City Commissioner. As the executive director, or one of them, of the D D A. and Dega, and a small business owner in downtown Kalamazoo, I know how important strong leadership is to keeping our community moving forward. The city manager role plays a, the city manager plays a vital role in bringing plans to life, from city revitalization and infrastructure to economic development and collaboration across departments. I attended the meet and greets, and I watched each of the interviews, and I truly trust and appreciate the thoughtful process that you all. — sorry, I lost my spot — that you have led the community through, including the surveys as well and all of the open engagement like we’re having this evening. I just wanted to say thank you for all of your hard work on this process, especially the special committee that worked on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Tom Schuster. I’ve owned a local business here in Kalamazoo for more than 40 years and have proudly called this city home for nearly 70. Kalamazoo has shaped my work, my family, my sense of community, and I care deeply about where we’re headed. First, I want to thank you. The process you’ve created to continue the leadership of our city government has been open, transparent, thoughtful. It has produced three excellent candidates, each smart, articulate, and clearly ready to serve. That outcome reflects your hard work and your respect for the people you represent. You’ve honored the trust placed on you and that deserves recognition. I may be one of the only people here tonight that’s not actually advocating for any one candidate because that really is your decision. I’m here to speak about the kind of leadership our city needs right now. The pace of change around us has never been faster. Federal policies are shifting overnight. Funding is appearing and disappearing without warning. Cities like ours are being forced to adapt constantly. So while I applaud the city’s steady progress, I also recognize this: we don’t have the luxury of time. Whoever steps into this role must be ready to lead on day one, understanding how our city systems work, where to turn for expertise, and how to build the partnerships that make progress possible. Kalamazoo doesn’t have the luxury of a listening tour. We need action. We need leadership that can match the speed of the challenges facing us and channel the energy of our people towards real, visible improvement. The forces shaping our future are moving fast, and the only way forward is for our city to move just as fast, guided by steady, experienced, and courageous leadership. Thank you for your time and your continued service.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Pastor Greg Jennings, pastor of Progressive Deliverance Ministries Church of God and Christ here in Kalamazoo. First, I want to congratulate City Manager Ritzma on your retirement. May you be blessed by the God that we serve. I sat there and I listened to everyone who spoke, and I thought it would be remiss if I didn’t say anything because there’s a scripture that tells me that “let every man be persuaded by his own mind or opinion, but let it be a good one.” And as I sit there and I listen to all of those who spoke and listen to the candidates, I believe that we cannot go wrong with either candidate. I believe they all are good because you have done a good job in your research. But I stand here because I have a relationship with one who I believe that I think that will continue in this city. And I can go by my own opinion. Laura Lamb, in 2012, I was getting ready to build, and she asked me to come down to the office. And I said, “No, I want you to come to my office because I want you to see what I’m about to do.” And when she came and I showed her and gave her the example of what I was about to build, she got so excited. And I told her, she said to me, “They would never give a variant.” I said, “But if you take this enthusiasm back as a city and what we’re trying to do,” I believed that it would pass. Lo and behold, two weeks later, she called me in shock and said, “They passed it and you can build what you want to build.” To me, that is a person who cares about our community. And in talking with her, I believed that she would carry on. And she made one statement that I often find in church, that when a person do not get the job, she said, “I will continue to work hard and do what I need to do to advance this city.” So while I don’t believe that we can go wrong with any candidate, I would love to see Laura Lamb as our new city manager.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager. Congratulations, City Manager, on your retirement. Honestly, I feel, all of this opinion this evening is my opinion, that you’ll be a hard act to follow. I had seen you go to just about every meeting I go to and different perspectives, listen, et cetera. While this is not about you, it is a foundation that you’re leaving and which I would like to build on as far as the candidate that I feel that, and I’m hoping that everyone would at least do due diligence on, and that’s Laura Lamb. I am in agreement with some of, well, I’m in agreement with a lot of what was said here today. You really can’t go wrong with any of them. Everybody’s done, you have done a great job of vetting. But I also have the mindset, just like the pastor shared, that it’s quite important to have someone who can step in on day one and get the job done. I really believe with the leadership that City Manager Ritzma is, has left, or is leaving, sorry, you’re not gone yet, behind, you know, I could see her at meetings. I know that she has asked my opinions as a veteran, as a person. While I don’t live in a city, I am in the city all the time with the different boards and the different opportunities that are out there. And I just, while it’s important to get fresh perspective, et cetera, but she does bring fresh perspective. She is somebody that’s going to be new at the table with a different way of handling things, but I believe that she is fully capable of becoming your next city manager. And the other things Pastor Jennings said, and I know this about her, is that regardless of who you select, I know that she will serve this city always, regardless. So I’m just asking you, as a community member, as of, well, I don’t vote for any of you, et cetera, but someone who also pays attention to what’s happening in and around our city and our neighborhoods, and I am a resident, and I know that, I know what’s important for me as a person, as a veteran, as a resident, as someone who frequents the city, I am interested in somebody who wants to listen to me at the table or who brings things to the table or someone who is willing to troubleshoot — I’m going to yell, I’m going to send a pandemic — so, who’s willing to troubleshoot the situations and the problems and the wonderful things and the bad things that are happening within our community. Thank you.
That’s okay. We got it. Thanks. Appreciate you. Hey, anyway, no one in broadcast land can hear you at this point. Everybody gets the three minutes, so.
That’s fine.
We’re good.
But you did share that it was an extra minute, I thought. Did I hear it correctly?
Oh, it’s usually two minutes.
Okay, well.
So I’m sorry.
I apologize. I’m still declaring Laura Lamb as my pick for city manager. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to make a comment who hasn’t already had a chance to make a comment? Hello.
My name’s Gary Work. I chaired the Stewart Neighborhood Association. In 2023, we completed our neighborhood plan with the help of Jay Schlabey. In it, some of our concerns are safety and traffic calming. This process was started, but it has stalled. And I’ll let Jessica Van Stratten pick it up from here, and then after that, we have Elijah.
Good evening for your time. My name is Jessica Van Stratten. I’m a resident in the Stewart neighborhood. I’m here to detail three main areas that we are requesting action for, for safety of drivers and pedestrians in the community that we have not seen any sort of response on to this time. I’ll detail those for the record, and we can also follow up in writing again. The first is a request for 25 mile-per-hour speed limit signs to be installed this fall facing each lane of ongoing traffic on: One, Stewart Avenue between West Main Street and West Kalamazoo Avenue; Two, Stewart Avenue between West Kalamazoo Avenue and North Street; Three, Woodward Avenue between West Main Street and West Kalamazoo Avenue; Four, Woodward Avenue between West Kalamazoo Avenue and North Street; The fifth one, Elm Street between West Main Street and West Kalamazoo Avenue; and finally, Elm Street between West Kalamazoo Avenue and North Street. The second main area of request is speed bumps to be installed in early spring of 2026. One of those on Woodward between West Main and Kalamazoo Avenue. Another one to be installed on Elm Street, mid-block between West Main Street and West Kalamazoo Avenue. And finally, one on Elm Street equidistant from the intersection corners between West Kalamazoo Avenue and North Street. Finally, we are requesting a third area for radar-controlled 35-mile-per-hour speed limit display signs, preferably to be permanently installed as soon as possible. One of those on the south side of West Main at the Thompson Street intersection, and the second one on the north side of West Kalamazoo Avenue just before the Elm Street intersection. I want to thank you for your time and attention to this as we continue to build a beautiful and safe community for all people who are either living there or coming through town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name’s Elijah Ish. I’m also on the board for the Stewart Neighborhood Association. To sum up what Jessica and Gary have asked for, we know that the road conversions that are planned to happen will greatly alleviate some of these traffic challenges and safety issues, but the reality is there are safety issues now. There was eight accidents this spring on West Main and Douglas that could have resulted in death of pedestrians and drivers. So we would hope that these would be done now so that we could alleviate some of these issues before the road conversions happen. I hope that whoever is selected as the city manager sees the priority in these issues and will ensure that we avoid any serious injury or death in our neighborhood due to traffic accidents and speeding. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Duncan, City of Kalamazoo. One, I wanted to come show appreciation to this commission for the diligence you guys have shown around the search. I will not announce who I want to support. I don’t get a vote. But for those whom are leaving the commission, I want to place upon your heart tonight that you are casting two votes, one for yourself leaving and one maybe for people who are coming into this commission. So for those of us that are running, we ask that you think of that as you cast that ballot tonight. But also, a deep appreciation for the commissioners that have reached out to people in the community, asked for advice, asked. I’ve received calls, texts from almost all of you, and the appreciation is real. I sincerely love that we have a commission that is taking this serious. The next decade maybe or longer is at stake with this election, so I would hate to be you guys right now.
You’re asking for it, though, my friend.
But the general public, obviously, as always, has had some critiques of this process that we can learn from. It may be 10 years from now, but overall, I think that we have three amazing candidates that each love our city and each have their own pros and cons. So I agree with many of our neighbors tonight when they say, “I don’t think that we can make a wrong selection.” But I love this place. I’m sure many of you do as well. And I know that the pressure and the weight of this decision has been weighing on many of you. So as a person who is not on the commission yet that wants to let the public know that there has been work done around this issue, I just wanted to make that public. So thank you again, and think of us when you cast that vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rochelle Habeck, and I’m a resident of the city and part of the Isaac Task Force. Thank you. People have said it so well for your thoughtful, deep work on this. It really is appreciated and evident. And oh, I hate to see Don Cooney leave, but we have to let him. Everyone has spoken so well about the capacities that are represented by our candidates. And you have all received my email. I don’t think I can really add anything of substance. I am pleased to hear the comments about Laura Lamb’s commitment to stay, and I do see that that creates the opportunity for us to take a risk. And it’s a risk that I think is important. I think we all value and know of her capacities, but I think it’s also true that the concerns that many of you have raised, that the community has raised, is that we have the opportunity to do something righter, righter than just hold steady and continue. And that would be to make a move that would demonstrate to parts of our community that are not on board with us, that we want them on board, and that it means that we could become stronger. We don’t necessarily have to lose something, but we have the capacity to gain something. And I think with the kinds of growth versus equity issues that we face, it’s really important that we not have a gaining group of people who feel disenfranchised. And I think that that could happen with dynamics that might result. Of course, those of us who are doing well are happy with the leadership that we have, and we will probably continue to do well no matter what. But there are other people who are not, and we really need to be bold at this time, I think, and that we can afford to take a risk, hoping that those who are already at the helm will stay there and move forward in a new way that is bigger and broader than we have been able to do so far. So I wish you wisdom and courage as you cast your votes, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who wants to make a comment at our Committee of the Whole meeting this evening? Seeing no one, I just want to thank everyone who did take the time, made the effort to come down here for the Committee of the Whole. Just a reminder, obviously, one of the main topics of discussion is part of our work at our 7:00 meeting, so we’ll be getting to that at that time. You’re certainly welcome to comment at the public comment time on the same topic at our 7:00 meeting. So Commissioners, we are really down to just kind of an open period for us. Just as a reminder, this is not going to be a time when we’re going to be deliberating or putting candidate names forward or discussing pros and cons. I guess it’s just more open discussion, recognizing certain things. I mean, we do have the results, which are posted on the website of the community survey. There was a summary that was provided, but also all of the results were available as well. We do have letters that we’ve received, and I know we’ve gotten a stack of those letters from a variety of people around the community, some who were here tonight and some who are not. And at this point, just another reminder is that what we will be getting to when we get to our 7:00 meeting is, once we begin to deliberate on that, there will be, and what’s presumably a choice gets made this evening, then there will be a short pause relative to that after that choice, just to make sure that whoever it is that is chosen is still at that last moment interested. That has to be confirmed before we move forward. And subsequent to that, then would be a motion to engage in negotiations. Just because we make an offer, it doesn’t necessarily mean it’s a done deal. There’s still an opportunity, there will be a negotiation process that occurs, as with any employment relationship. So there’d be a motion we would need to make relative to that once we have that confirmation. So that’s what it’s going to look like at our business meeting this evening. Any thoughts, just for the good of the order, for this meeting from anybody? Vice Mayor Hess?
Sure. I’d like to thank everybody that took the time and everybody who came out or everybody that reached out, wrote a, penned a letter, emailed a letter, and took the time. That’s important in community. My gratitude, though, is really deep for Pamela with Raff Tellus, for our city staff My gratitude, though, is really deep for Pamela with Reftellus, for our city staff that spent literally hours, days figuring all of this out, from the public relations folks to our human resources people, and especially Aaron Liao for his wise counsel during this time. So just gratitude for that, and looking forward to seeing what we come up with here.
Any other thoughts or comments, Commissioners, for the good of the order for this meeting? Chris Brean?
I appreciate the folks who have mentioned and just uplifted the fact of how blessed we are to have three incredibly qualified, gifted candidates before us to be considered tonight. You know, I keep thinking about, you know, people have mentioned about the weight of the decision for us, but I also wanted to just recognize, you know, for folks on city staff. It's a big decision, probably having a lot of city employee watch parties tonight, you know, imagining who their new leader is going to be during a period of significant change already. And so I want to make sure for them to know, we're going to be all right. And for the community, irregardless of who you support, I want to make sure that they know as well that not only are we going to be all right, but I'm confident that we're going to thrive and do exceptionally well under the leadership of any of these three folks. Change is difficult. Irregardless of which of the three individuals is named, there's going to be change, but I feel like we are in good hands as a community. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Chris Brede. Any other comments for the Committee of the Whole meeting? All right, seeing none, then. Just a reminder, in a little over an hour, we'll be back here for our regular business meeting at seven o'clock. Hope to see many of you again at that meeting. Appreciate your presence here, and this meeting is now adjourned.